Calling it to order. And just a reminder, check the signature file. Be sure to go in there and sign. And second order businesses, Bob Clay and Josie Ewing regarding election care funds dispersment. And I think we've had time to consider what has been going on. And we kind of left it. At least Josie, you can verify, but I think we did propose a compromise solution to reimbursing both your staff and the registration staff. And have you had a chance to click? I guess that sure, where are you anyway? There you are. Yeah, so I think I'm clear in what the compromise is and whether. You're on mute, but.
Bill, I'm not sure the rest of the board knows of what the compromise is that was being offered.
Okay, it was in the packet that was sent out.
Okay.
For the work section.
Josie, you're on mute.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Um, I'm sorry, you know, Bob isn't part of the call tonight. I don't know if something came up, but um, yes, I was able to have a conversation with the election officials and you know, they're, they're happy that they're to receive something for the extra work and also extremely thankful. You know, we really appreciate this and we just want you guys to know that, you know, we aren't here because we expect extra, that we are invested in this community, but we also felt it was important to recognize that there was all more additional work that was done. And on another note, this will also be very helpful for other town clerks and election officials across the state. NHPR did do a short brief article on this issue because other clerks are requesting additional compensation, but some towns are not necessarily planning on using the money or part of the funds to compensate their election officials extra. So I think we're setting a standard that's going to help other clerks and I'm very thankful for that.
Okay. Thanks, Josie. Any discussion on, on the board side regarding, you know, the compromise and if they're going to have a chance to take a look at that?
Bill, are you looking at the memorandum from Catherine Lowe of December 28?
Uh, yes, the one that contains, you know, a proposed compromise solution.
So I had one question about the town clerk between the estimated 71 hours versus the estimated 30 hours. Have we decided which one?
I, I think we're looking at the 1700.
Okay.
It's made 71 hours.
Why, why was that? I mean, her, her letter said 30 and then the moderator said 71, so.
Um, actually, either Kathy and or Josie, do you wanna?
Um, the 30, can I ask for clarification? Is there a question whether I worked 30 additional hours?
Well, the, the question was, uh, your letter originally, I think, said 15 hours for each election, which was 30. And then the one that Bob sent out, I guess, had 71 hours. And I was just wondering.
So I'm just going to do a simple math. All right, for three months, let's say three months and there's four weeks in each month, that's 12 weeks. All right, let's just say I worked 10 hours extra overtime, which.
Yeah.
Worked out 10, 10 or more. It, it comes actually about to 120 hours overall.
All, all I'm saying is your letter said 30.
Actually, my letter did not state 30 extra hours overall.
It said, uh, said, uh, let's see. Hmm. Where is it? Rockville Salem, 10 days. Total working hours is a letter. Let's see, who sent this? From Bob Clay. I don't know. All right, whatever.
Bob, so Bob submitted a letter to the board stating some of the hours that were shared between all of us. And in the letter, it said not include all of the additional work contributed by the clerk's office. Letter to the board, I stated up to 15 hours overtime weekly leading up to elections. So that's, that's what my letter stated.
Okay. Thank you, Josie. Um, any other questions or comments? Then we have a motion.
This is Jesse.
Oh, hi Jesse.
Hi, uh, I do have a question. Is any of the overtime that the department spent to help with the elections? Is any of that money going to the, back to the department's overtime line?
Um, when I talked to, you know, when I talked to Bob, we felt that the money should be used to cover unanticipated costs. Um, and that's really, and the grant is also, it's very specific that it's supposed to cover unanticipated costs. No, I don't believe, because we anticipate that we're going to receive additional help each election. No, it wasn't covered to use the overtime. At least, I don't know if Ann refigured that or if Ann wants to speak.
I can actually speak to that. We, we took out whatever would have been normally done in any election and that would include your guys, Jesse, doing the setup for the breakdown, whichever one you do. That would, you guys got paid, but you got paid outside of the grant that Josie applied for. Cause that would have been done at a nor any other election as well, so.
Thank you, Kathy, yep.
And regardless, the town serves to, or is intended to receive $6,835, you know, to offset in our budget, but as revenue, I guess.
I moved it, uh, we, uh, compensate the town moderator and, uh, town clerk and staff in accordance with the Bob Clay's letter.
Or at least that the Catherine, Catherine Lowe.
Negotiated letter, yeah.
With the.
Yeah, I've, I've got it right here.
Okay. So the compromise that we offered.
That's right.
Okay. All right, Neil moved, is there a second?
Second.
John seconded, any discussion?
Just to be super clear, we're talking about the, the prices as written on the, on the memo from Kathy Lowe dated December 28th. And specifically, the, the numbers in the left-hand column, not the ones in the right-hand column.
Correct.
Yep, thanks Zach.
I had just another quick question. Have we, have we received the funds?
We did.
Great.
All right, um, so therefore.
The board votes, yes, Josie's taking everybody to lunch.
Or the, or the town. The town's got more, so, but, um, all right, um, John, your vote?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I just had it. All right, thank you.
Show you a shrimp scampi, still.
Promises, promises, Josie.
I know. Promise, huh? All right, thank you guys so much.
Thanks too.
Please extend our thanks again to the, to everybody who participates in the elections. They are very.
Yeah, you know what? We all really appreciate it and, um, it would actually, you know, I don't know if the board is interested in doing this or if Ann would be interested in writing a letter, but a lot of clerks across the state are struggling. They are asking for additional compensation because of the amount of extra work that was done. Um, I think it would be helpful if, you know, like right now, we're setting a standard and if we communicated that with other communities, what we're doing. Not that they have to follow our lead, but, um, I think it would be extremely helpful to some individuals.
Okay. Kathy, you want to take a stab at it? Kathy or Ann, or I think that probably would be helpful.
We'll work on that, yep.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, next up, um, the nonprofit committee. Were there?
It would be Mike Courier and Mark Halloran.
Right. So, um, Mark, do you want to just explain, um, what you basically did?
Sure.
Percentages, yeah.
Do the members of the board have the worksheet that we did?
Good, this thing.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Well, first of all, good evening. What Michael and I tried to do was not impact the tax rate. So the first thing we did was look at the growth in the community last year and that, that was about 3.8%. And so we, we worked on that in terms of, uh, potentially what we would recommend to the board. There were some organizations that did not ask for an increase. They, they, uh, requested what they got. Those that did, um, for instance, Katie, um, asked for $10,000. They received eight in the previous fiscal year and we're recommending a $300 increase, which would be 3.75. And, uh, so what we did was basically went down there. The only really big outlier, um, was Lakes Region Mental Health. We increased them, they had $7,000 and they requested 7,500. And, and we, we recommend that extra 500 at 7.1. But given the impact of, of everything that's going on and, and quite frankly, how those mental health agencies are scrambling, we thought it was appropriate to, um, give them what they requested. The other increases are about 3.8, um, except for, uh, down below Transport Central. They, uh, they got a thousand dollars from the town last year. They're requesting $2,254. But we are, we are recommending $500, which would be a 50% increase on the thousand dollars. Again, that, that seems to be, um, a service that is, is used heavily by folks from Plymouth. Our only concern with that is, uh, a group says that they work with 17 communities in the Pemme Baker area and I, and I'm sure they do. But when you look at how much the other communities give, they, they have a total, um, grant of $3,000 from all the communities and we were one-third of that. So that, that sort of concerned us that, uh, you know, it was the old, you know, let Plymouth do it. And but at the same time, we thought it was inappropriate, so we went with $1,500 for that group.
Do we, do we assume that Plymouth is the most used as well?
I would make that assumption, Mary Ann, quite frankly. We have a lot of the senior apartments are here and, and more so than some of the more rural communities.
Do you think we make up a third?
Uh, I, I don't know, because I didn't see their numbers. Um, so overall, um, last year, the town, um, approved $82,787. The requests were 104,781. That would have been about a 26 and a half percent increase. And Michael and I are recommending a total of $86,167, which would be a $3,370 increase, which is about 4%, which, which really then taps into the growth of the community. So that would, that recommendation, I don't think, would have an impact on the current tax rate. Michael, do you want to add to that?
Um, just, I mean, they're all very worthy causes and we, we know that it's kind of the double-edged sword with nonprofits since they, they don't generally pay taxes. But I do think especially in times like now, the, the mental health people and getting the, the elderly around town and where they need to go is pretty important. And I think this is pretty fair. I also think that it sits well when, when the town does increase. I mean, a lot of times you don't see any changes in anything because we're always kind of behind. But I think that in showing this, people are recognizing that we're being fair about this. So that's, that's kind of behind the way we, you know, determine things.
Can you just start at the top of the spreadsheet and read your recommendations for each line so that we can write it, just write in what you're recommending?
Sure. Uh, let's see. The American Red Cross, uh, the request, it's going to be a 3141, which is $3,141, which is what it was last year and it's what they asked for this year. So we're keeping that the same. Katie, uh, is getting $300 more than they did last year, but significantly less than what they have asked for this year. So they've got 8,300. Lakes Region Mental Health asked for 7,500 in, based on the situation I spoke of before. We felt that was, that was fair and a good place to put that money. So 7,500 for Lakes Region Mental Health. Grafton County Seniors, you know, they always, always need more and they certainly do a great job with that population, uh, which I'm going to be one of them pretty soon, if not already. So we gave them $570 more, $15,570. Pemme Baker, uh, Health is again, another 570, so 15, 570 for them as well. Bridge House, who was our, kind of our stalwart there every year, they're helping us out in terms of the homeless situation and then, uh, it saves the town some money there. So they asked for 13,000, which is what they got last year and we'd like to give them the same amount this year. Pemme Baker Youth Center, great, great organization for, for kids. Again, they asked for 8,000, they got 8,000 last year, so we're going to keep that at 8,000, we recommend. Tri-County CAP, uh, they wanted 13,975, we're looking at 7,936. So they're up about $290. Voices Against Violence, uh, they wanted 6,600, we have 41, $4,150, up about $150. CASA and, um, you know, I could, I could tell you that I, I live right in the middle of a lot of the operations that they have and the kids that they support and they do a great job and their work is all volunteer. So, um, I felt with times, the way they are these days, that was also another place where we could, we could give them a little bit of help. So, uh, they're asked for 1,500 and we thought it was fair to give them that amount. So $1,500 for them. And again, you know, Mark talked about the Transit Central and $1,500 is, uh, is where we felt was fair.
Hey, thank you.
Hey, so I hate to admit it, but I'm, I'm on the board of a couple of these, so I'm contributing to the nonprofits. But I'm on Lakes Region Mental Health, uh, new board member and also Transport Central. So I appreciate, um, especially what Mike had to say and, and Mark too, for that matter. Cause, um, I think mental health is definitely critical at this juncture.
Yeah, it impacts so many other things in the community. I mean, it impacts, you know, fire, police and everybody. And a lot of this, the mental health issues are, we're getting more and more of the kids that are having, I mean, you wouldn't believe the discussions that I, I get involved in at the high school of some, you know, parents that OD and heroin, you know, all these things happening to these kids that haven't got a clue. So it's great work that they do and it certainly is necessary. And I, I do think that it makes a difference in the community when we've got, um, kids getting better because of that.
And, and they're moving through the new facility behind, um, yeah, what, what's the, uh, Local Foods Plymouth, Peray. Um, Doug McLean's building on, on, um, you know, Highland Street. They're renovating that, that, um, complex of buildings behind there and they're going to have a grand opening sometime either January or February. But, so that's pretty good because they're getting, um, facility down in the, in the area where they need to, so. What about Purlak? Does Purlak come out? That's another one of mine too.
Are they, they're like. They're under dues, Bill. They're not a non, they're not listed as a nonprofit organization like these are.
Right, they're, they're under the dues portion.
All right, sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike and Mark. Great job.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Agreed, thank you. Um, very good. Next is the, um, the Budget Committee Recommendations. And.
Go get them, Ted.
Let's go. I, I presume everybody's got a copy?
Yep.
Yep.
So I don't know how you want to do it. But, you know, we broke it out to some general observations that we found in common between multiple areas. And then we went down and got into the details about each specific department slash area. Uh, the first, the, the first one up, the observation, I'm not going to read it because you all have a copy, was the general salary increase of 3% across the board for everybody. And the, the, the concern here is that if we're using this as a baseline every year, that it doesn't seem to take into consideration that maybe the non-union people should be treated somewhat differently than the union contract. And I realize that it may not be a popular stance, but, you know, given what we've seen in the last year, you know, not everybody has got that kind of salary guarantee every year in the community. And this may come off not as well as it could be desired. So I guess the proposal is that maybe instead of assuming a 3% every year, that maybe go back to, this is something that's evaluated on a year-by-year basis to see what is appropriate and what we can.
Okay.
Can I just offer to the board that, um, following the Budget Committee, we do have Carol Granfield, who has completed half of our wage and classification study. And there is information there, I think, that will help the board, um, with their salary concerns.
Thank you.
And there's quite a list here, so like, I don't want to spend too much time on any individual. Um, departments assume that they have the same exact budget items year after year. And I guess what I'm suggesting, what we're suggesting here is that maybe this get reevaluated on a department-by-department basis to see if it's fully applicable every year. And I gave some examples and these are not necessarily the only examples. But in many cases, justification is things are old, even after just replacing them. And it seems generally a little bit of a copy and paste from the previous year. And as such, if you've been on the Budget Committee before, you're used to seeing the same item and it doesn't seem like there is really a full justification. It's just again, you know.
And I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you, so if you could speak up just a little bit?
I will try, um, I don't want to shout.
Much better. Thank you.
Okay. The big, the big thing for the Budget Committee is that the materials that were given don't have a lot of consistency between departments. So, uh, we're, I'm recommending here that we have some sort of standard format that every department use that tells the Budget Committee exactly what they need to know every year so that it's, it's an easier job. And, and I give credit to the, the police and fire. They, they give a much better example of what the detail that we're looking for than necessarily all of the departments. And this is not necessarily to follow anyone, but to basically encourage a standard practice that is carried here by you. And so you can read the, the A, B, C, D and, um, you know, uh, address those as we can. Another observation is the accounting system seems to be a little bit kind of a, and I say black box, a lot of the department budget managers don't really understand behind the scenes. It may be useful for Ann or someone appropriate to kind of go into more detail so they can have a better understanding, you know, what happens with the revenues. That way they can be accounted for on their, their budget committee materials. It's a way we can understand it. Some, some cases that, you know, we have some departments that are revenue generating, but in the materials that are given to the Budget Committee, we don't see the fact that, for example, the Parks and Rec generates $300,000 in revenue. To us, they just look like a $800,000 expense unless we ask for that information. Uh, another recommendation is that the town should be doing some goal-setting with departments. Some are doing long-term planning very well, others are not. And again, this kind of gets back to where a greater degree of consistency and, uh, something else we covered below, you know, performance metrics would help not just the Budget Committee, but the town constituents as a whole understand better, you know, how we're measuring the success of our departments. Departments have reported that they get frozen in the spring, which means I, I take it to mean they can't spend any more money. So it seems to be a little odd if this happens every year, they get frozen in the spring, that maybe their allocations that they're given on the bottom line don't match up with the reality. And maybe there needs to be some kind of right sizing so that instead of freezing them every year, they give them the amount that they reasonably expected they can spend. That way you don't have projects that were planned essentially being put on the shelf. Uh, number seven kind of goes back in line with some of the other things that we've mentioned above. Basically trying to find a way to make sure that all the budgets are right-sized. Basically starting at zero, building out what was spent from the previous years and establish a new budget based on the actual spending patterns that have been observed. And I've been told that number eight is not really possible in the town budgeting, uh, practices. I'm not really sure exactly how that all works, but, um, the idea is that we thought that each department should have the capability of having some sort of savings account for, I mean, trucks or whatever it is that could grow year to year so that when they want to buy one, that, that it's not a budget increase during the year that they're actually making the purchase. It's just something that they've saved for and it's available to them, but they need to do it. Well, one of the things that we wanted to mitigate against is this up and down, uh, tax rate that seems to change year to year, all based on, you know, basically let's flatten it out a little bit. And that's part of what I understood the, the bond was supposed to do. Where we bought a lot of equipment that had been deferred. Yet after the whole bond went through, we didn't see the maintenance budgets for those items on the individual departments change at all. It was still reflecting what it was before those things had been purchased. Stop me if I'm going too quickly before you have questions.
Mr. Chairman, um, we have been through this list already once. I think that, well, at least what I was hoping out of this meeting was for a recommendation from the committee. Um, I'm not sure if that's what everyone else anticipated. I didn't realize we were going to go through this list again. Because we've already been through it once, we already had some answers to that.
Well, we're going to recommend what we said last time, so.
Correct, yeah.
So you, so you really had no changes to the budget, Mike, or?
No, we.
No, we, we, we melted this stuff down pretty significantly before we even came to the first meeting. So I think that we were all on the same page for the, the amount of information and knowledge we had to work with, you know?
So there wasn't any?
So, no, I, it wasn't like, we didn't go back and research anything and want to change it. We felt pretty comfortable with what we, what we, what we, um.
What was presented from the department you were comfortable with the numbers?
Yeah, and just some of the thoughts, and I know that, that, that we're talking budget, but so just some of the thoughts that might facilitate and, and make things a little easier within the town between departments and the board and whatnot. So that, that's all. Those are just kind of our thoughts about it seems, uh, areas that, that might be able to be tightened up a little bit or, you know, made more customized so that we're all kind of looking at the same sort of stuff and have a better idea.
All right, this, um, maybe I missed the, the expanded list, but, uh, this, the list has gotten by far expanded from the last time we looked at it, I thought. And, um, but also, and you had a chance to make comments on the ones that, um, you know, we think we could, um, probably accommodate.
Yes, when you met with the Budget Committee last time, um, I actually had an opportunity to go through and see what their, um, concerns were and give some sort of comment. And I, I understand their concerns. But one of the biggest things that we're trying to do is we're trying to keep the tax rate down. And I think one of the, um, projects of the committee was to see if there is anything within the budget that you would recommend that is being asked for of the departments that maybe we could hold off on. Any changes to the budget? I'm looking financial changes. I know that we can, we can all work better at getting a better presentation. But I was hoping that the committee would come in with some sort of, uh, we recommend not doing a project this year or reducing this by this because of whatever reason. Um, that's what I was.
In the individual department.
Yeah.
And I don't think we've covered those yet in any form. Um, some specific ones, if you're looking for ones that we recommended, just blew them away with.
I was looking to see if there was any recommended changes to the budget as it was presented to the Budget Committee.
Yes, under the library, they asked for an additional $600 a year for propane that they've been paying for out of their current operational budget. We specifically stated there that we do not recommend funding this request.
So may I speak to that? This is Diane from the library. So, uh, this is a line that is new this year. Every year we have a fireplace, you know, and the new addition that was, uh, began functioning in 2011. And, um, every year we get approximately four deliveries of propane. And, uh, since there wasn't really a line item that supported, uh, propane, we have just sort of, um, found a way to pay for this item. Um, and it's not, you know, on average, it costs us about $600 a year. And, um, so we have just sort of been taking it out of various lines to cover the cost. So it's not a blockbuster item, but it does cost on average about $600 a year. Um, so this was the first year that I asked permission from Town Hall to add an additional line. So I would actually have a place to take this money from. And, um, Ann was kind enough to allow a line so that I would actually have a designated line to, from which to take these funds. And, um, so it is about $600 a year for deliveries on average, um, per winter. And so this is the expense that the library is requesting so that we're not having to, um, take from Peter to PayPal so that we can have our fireplace. So that was the rationale behind this line.
Right. And I noticed there were some PPTV, um, charges that will now be, um, assigned to the town as well.
Yes, we have a number of phone lines that the library pays for. And, um, one of that, we have two lines in our elevator, an emergency line and the backup emergency line, two for the library. One of those also shares our fax line and, um, one is PPTV.
Okay.
Um, we also had in there that they stated that they did not generally use their overtime budget. As such, um, if they're not, if it's not being used and it's being used to fund other things, then this particular line should be adjusted to reflect actual needs. I'm paralyzed.
Uh, it's true that the library generally does not pay overtime, um, and hasn't for a while. The, um, thing that we have found over the years is again, we end up, uh, robbing Peter to PayPal most of the time. And in the course of it being a bottom line budget, we do end up absorbing those funds, um, for other items. Um, we don't have maintenance staff here. We do have a, a cleaning crew that does our cleaning in the evenings. Um, but in terms of maintenance staff, we end up having to hire out for all contracting services, um, anything that involves a repair. And so we find at the end of the day, we do end up spending those funds. So after discussing it with the trustees and asking them what they would prefer to, to do with this line, since we do end up using that money, um, we would like to ask permission to allocate those funds into a line. Either computers, because, um, we do tend to use the technology, uh, line tends to run over for us or in the, um, contractors are building fund. It is money that tends to get used, but it's true, it does not tend to get absorbed for overtime for the stated purpose.
The other one that we, we, we discussed was an electric expense. Uh, they did apparently a significant LED replacement.
I'm sorry, Ted, I can't quite hear you.
Uh, the other one that was an electric expense.
Yes.
Uh, where there was a significant LED replacement done.
Yes.
However, the sizing for the electrical cost has not been adjusted to reflect the lower cost. And basically the recommendation is that this needs to be right sized.
So the LED conversion took place at the beginning of fiscal year, uh, 1920. And so it's true that we have seen, uh, some significant changes in our electrical bill. However, in the course of that year, we had the beginning of COVID and we had a building shut down, uh, during that time. Uh, so I would prefer, before we go ahead and make a dramatic change to that line, to see a regular year, go through, uh, the course of a regular year, uh, before we make those adjustments. We are open normally 48 hours per week. And as many of you know, we allow the building to be used after hours by various, uh, groups in the area. Um, so even when the building is not open, uh, it's still being used. And as you know, we also have PPTV, um, in the building and they're also using, um, power. And so, um, before we make an adjustment to that line, I would really like to see a full year of normal use run through its course before we make, um, a dramatic cut to that line. I would like to see what a normal year looks like. And I'm assuming it will be lower.
It shouldn't be higher.
Yes.
Um, another thing that we noticed with, uh, the library is that they, they sub out to, um, three lakes for some activities that we could consider using the Parks and Rec staff to do that would yield potential savings.
I did have discussion with Larry at Parks and Rec about, they, they did do it for, for years for us. I did have discussion with Larry at Parks and Rec about, uh, potentially taking that service over again, uh, in the next fiscal year. And I think he is working with his staff to, uh, make that a possibility again. However, he did mention that, you know, if we take it out of our line, he'd like to see that returned back to his budget. That's between you and Parks and Rec, of course, so.
I think that's the end of the substantive recommendations for the library. Uh, the one, the next one that to bring up is that the biggest change in the recycling budget seems to be the creation of a new full-time position. And the, the hardest part for us in the Budget Committee is that we didn't really see any, any justification why we were fitting a full-time position for extra cost in the materials we were provided. And given that this is a benefited position and that there's been a lot of time where the facility has been closed over the last year, it was difficult, it was difficult for us to see the need for this at the much more increased cost.
So I'll, I'll speak to that. The, the creation of it is due to, even though we've been shut down, or not, not as much time as it seems, um, we've collected more waste. And having that fifth full-time position and doing away with the part-time position, um, would allow, uh, uh, would allow more work um, to, to mitigate those, that, that increased waste amount.
So you're going to eliminate that part-time position?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thi- I think the idea, Jesse, you talked about taking the part-time, eliminating that, creating a full-time position. So it'd be like half a man more, but then there'd also be the benefits to add on to that cost, right?
Correct.
Yeah. How is your overtime? This, you know, with things.
Now?
I, I'm just wondering if, if you're not open as much, but I mean, there's a lot, a lot more trash coming in. I understand that. Um, if you use more overtime for the hours that you were open or, or when that kicked in.
So when we, when we spoke, the three of us.
Yeah.
Um, we're fully staffed and we're back to full hours. So, and we've been doing that since November.
Okay, so then I would imagine that it, you must, if you, if you need another full-time person, then you must be going overtime somewhere or?
I have. So I'm, as of right now, I'm at, uh, I believe 50%.
50% over?
No, I'm not, I'm not over. I've used 50% of my overtime.
I got you.
Um, as far, and, um, I, I'd like to keep that, um, just, just so that way we can have it for snowstorms. So when I do have to call my employees in to help clean up in the mornings, we can do that. And, um, you know, I had to use overtime for the elections.
I don't know. I, I like the idea of having a pool, the town have a pool for things that come up for different departments on things. Because when we actually give that additional money, you know, that's not going to go away. And every year there are different needs. Sometimes, you know, with COVID, certain areas didn't have to spend as much money, but some had to spend more. So, you know, it seems like rather than giving money that not be used and builds up, and I think that's, everybody tries to pad it a little bit. I, I get that. I would too, because you want to make sure to have what you need. But I think if we had that pool of money where we could support every department when something like that comes up, uh, I don't know, it just seems a little more, it tightens the purse string a little bit. I think it better control over the money that's going out. But that's just my thought.
Is, so is the committee not recommending a fifth full-time position?
Based on the materials that we were given, the justification we're given, we cannot, we cannot see the justification.
So when we spoke, my justification wasn't enough?
No, I mean, it, it, there was really no substantive data that you could point to that said this was needed over previous years. I'm not saying that you shouldn't have it. I'm just saying, based on the materials given, there was no justification for it.
Because of COVID-19, people are staying home more. This is a usual.
One-year activity, though.
Right, right, but.
So this is a, this would be a year-over-year when things return.
Now are getting rid of their businesses. They're brick and mortars. So that, that waste is being generated inside the town. Which is, which is happening. It's, I mean, the numbers that I'm seeing, yeah, it, it, waste is being, more waste is being generated in the town.
How much?
Uh, I think when we spoke, it was 18 tons over. But what it was from last year.
The problem being is that 18 tons over, what does that really mean? You don't tie it to any number of, uh, costs. It's really hard to say, okay, 18 tons over really means a 50% increase in volume, 10%, we, we don't have anything to go with. So it's hard for us to give you a blessing when you're giving us just a number that doesn't mean.
Fair enough.
So I hate to interrupt, but, um, we've got two items that are, uh, very important that we need to do in 15 minutes. And, um, you know, so I'm debating upon whether or not to maybe, um, move one of the items to, uh, the regular meeting. And I'd like to, actually, Carol, do you know how long, um, your discussion might be? Oh, you're on mute.
I was told 15 minutes and that's all it would take if, if that long to go over.
All right, um, I, I'm thinking, you know, Scott, you're, you're, where, where are you?
At the bottom.
He's on mute too.
Oh, Scott, do you, do you, do you mind moving, um, or is there any objection to move your item to the regular meeting?
Not at all.
All right, but it's also addressing, uh, a concern of, uh, you know, a town citizen, but I think that wouldn't be a problem. You know, and I think it'd be important to get it out, you know, to the regular meeting too. So, thank you, Scott, and I'm sorry, uh, Ted, Mike and Mike, uh, or Mark rather, but, um, I think, and Mike. But, um, can we move, um, let's see, I don't know when we can fit this discussion in, except we do have, uh, a board work session next, next, uh, Tuesday, Monday, whatever.
Tuesday.
So maybe we can also, um, hear whatever left is left of this?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm using.
All right, so thank you very much, but, um, Carol, can you go ahead and describe, you know, your work?
Sure. I'll, I'll, I'll be brief and move along because I know you're, you're interested in budget numbers. Uh, uh, as far as the study overview, it started, the last time you had a study was done by NHNA and that was in 1999. Um, so this is the first time there's been an overall study again. And, uh, we looked at developing both job descriptions, uh, evaluating the, the wages and benefits to evaluate your overall positions in the town. Uh, what we did was we've interviewed all the employees and next month we should be working on the rest of the project, which will be developing the job descriptions. We've met with everyone, so you'll have standardized job descriptions. And that helped us look at the actual positions. Uh, regarding a classification plan, and we provided you with it just to take a look at. All of this will be in a final report when we're done. But you previously had 29 grade levels, which was a large number for the number of positions you have. So we've generated, um, a new classification plan that has 18, um, grade levels. And their, uh, positions grouped within that based on looking at both internal and external equity. So it gives you a, a structure. You didn't have a real structure in place. Salaries would be added, new positions. So now as they're changing, you can add them to the classification plan. And then with that, we developed, um, a pay plan which, uh, has 18 grade levels with minimums and maximums. So, um, the distance between the minimum and maximum is 40%, which is a good number. So people can, um, move through that. Uh, you can hire based on experience and qualifications within that. Um, but then it's matched to looking. But then it's matched to looking at, we surveyed, it ended up being 11 comparable communities, as comparable as can be. Some are, some are not. For example, you're, you have a town manager, which is different than a town administrator, has more authority. So a good number of them in your population category were town administrators, and there are some others. But with that, we have the range, which gives a good amount within the 18 grade levels. The towns listed there, we, we did have a couple others that weren't able to participate in the study. The last, we provided you with the benefits to give you an idea of what we surveyed benefits. Because it's look, you look at both your salaries as well as benefits for your total compensation. And with that, overall, your benefits are very good. There are just a few areas looking at that, that you might want to increase to be more competitive. And they're low-cost items if you decide to do that. For example, you're, you, you don't provide as much life insurance, and life insurance is fairly inexpensive if you add the level. Right now, it's only at $50,000. And, and you don't offer long-term disability. Again, it's not utilized that frequently, but when it's needed, it's, it's a positive benefit. And you don't offer that. Your health insurance is, you're, you're providing 85% coverage, which is excellent to keep the overall cost down. However, the other communities are still paying 90% or in some cases, 100%. So offsetting that, we look at the salary to kind of offset some of the benefits. But overall, your benefit structure is very good. The last spreadsheet we provided, which was in a working document, gets down to the cost. It's the estimated cost for FY '22. And this is to move employees just to the minimum level. In other words, the grade level we proposed for the positions, the employees don't even meet that entry-level stage. So this is to bring those positions to the minimum level. And in the figures here, it includes what you already have in your budget right now. So the only additional cost to what you have in the budget ends up being a total of $13,310. And that's to bring one, two, three, four, five, six, about seven positions to the minimum level. Any other changes you would want to make to any position would be done, whether it's looked at with performance evaluations or, or some other method. So budget-wise for a cost, what you would need to do to bring those positions up would be adding the $13,000. Then you would have your pay, your pay plan, a classification plan, and the town would be able to hire within, within those grade levels in the range. The, when we looked at establishing those grade levels, we did match it more to the average. If there's some that are very hard to recruit down the road, if someone retires and it's a difficult position, you may want to look at hiring them at the higher end of that grade range. So this is where we're at now. The, the rest of the study will be finishing up with the job descriptions and, and final report. But these are kind of the numbers, working documents we had. And I know Kathy and Anne wanted to, with budgets coming up, get the figures to have you take a look and see if you had any questions regarding the study. But it gives you a nice structure, which right, the last several years hasn't been very structured. Now there's a system. So when a position becomes available, they'll look at what the grade level is and can do the recruitment and hire within that range. So that's, that's a quick in a nutshell. I know you're crunched for time, but if you have questions or on any of the, the documents, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
All right, thanks, Carol. I do have one thing that we actually are kind of kicking around as far as, you know, increase in steps would be based on a performance evaluation, which we don't have.
Yeah. The, many places will, now if you have, if you wanted to have a step system, it usually is a lot more costly to implement because you have to place people on a particular step. If you want to go that route, you would have to have a step system. Now, if you don't have a performance system, you can still have one with an open range and have it developed. We've done a lot of those with, it could be 1% to 5%, 3% to 5%. And you end up having a system in place, you have the supervisors go through some training, and then it's monitored, and then that's how they would move throughout there based on performance. So if you have high performers, they could move up with that, and it's, it's a good way to, to go forth. So your employees, they're not just stuck in a certain, because you don't tip, you don't end up moving someone to a great, different grade level just to give them more money. You need to look at the positions. These are valued at a certain amount. And then if you have a performance system, if that's something down the road you're interested, you know, I can talk with the town about that. But that would be a good system to move forth with.
All right, I think we initially, we had a discussion that we were going to use this in our budget, you know, budgeting, or, you know, to, to help with, and I'm not certain unless Anne or Kathy can describe how we could use this effectively to help, you know, develop our budget.
I mean, can we compare some of the, the numbers that are in here against some of the larger increases that have been requested in the budget? And see if those, you know, the, those are justified in the proposed budget as needed to bring people up to equity. But if they're not recommended in this report, then, then maybe we reject those in the budget.
So there's, there's really only a few, a few positions that we really need to consider changing for the upcoming year. With the 3% is what you're seeing on the 720, 71, 2021. That is what the hourly wage is for all of the positions as you go down through. And then if you look at.
Positions, Anne, in the budget are more than a 3% increase, right?
There.
Requests, yes.
There is one request.
There's a couple.
For 3%.
There's some for 5%. I've seen one for a fixed increase, like $7,000.
Yep. So you could take this information and really look at your budgets and.
And look at the requests, and this should help justify whether or not to approve those requests or make some kind of
proposal.
Proposal for what you want to give instead.
So the amounts that you're seeing for fiscal year 71, 2021, which is the third column over, includes for places like the fire department, with that adjustments that they had requested to their employees. Those wages are in there, and you can see how they fall in the proposed minimum versus the proposed maximum for the year.
So we can use this information at our Tuesday, our Tuesday budget work session. We can discuss everything then.
How long are we, we're going to be meeting on Tuesday? I think this might be at least a few hours or something.
I think probably, yeah, yeah. I don't know if the board wants to start Tuesday's meeting earlier than 5:00, if anybody, if you're all available earlier.
I'm available.
Mary Ann, I know you usually work till 4:00, but.
I, Tuesday's my day off, so I can start earlier.
This, this is Tuesday, the 19th.
Yes. Zach, are you open?
Yep.
So you want to start at 3:00 maybe, or 2? 2 o'clock?
Who, Zach, do you have a problem with that, or?
I can start at 3:00.
3 o'clock, okay.
Kathy, do you want the Budget Committee participating in that meeting? Where, where are we on that?
I, I, I think that Bill had said that you could finish your recommendations at that time, but I feel like the board should meet and discuss the budget themselves.
Right, but do, do you have a time that you want us to meet on that day? Bill?
Yeah, let's.
Well, email us. Let, let us know when, when you figure out the time.
Sure, that, that sounds good.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
All right.
If you need any other, I'm sorry, if you need any other information prior to your budget meetings, let me know, and I can provide it. But I think this should give you what you need in looking with the budget.
And Carol, we thank you because we really pushed, we pushed you.
Well, at least you have the numbers. We'll finish the rest of it next month, so you should have the whole package. But I think you're, you'll be in good shape. So good luck with your budget meetings.
Thank you.
Very much, Carol.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
We'll see ya.